Call October 2nd, Brooklyn City Council Meeting to Order. Incitation Pastor Rich?
We can bow our heads with a word of prayer. Father God, we just look to you tonight. Lord, we just, Father, just need your wisdom. All the decisions that are coming before this council, Lord, they need your wisdom, they need your strength, they need your insight. I just pray that your Spirit would rest upon them, Lord, and that, Father, as they are taking this city into, Father, new land, new perspectives, Lord, new building projects, Lord, all this expansion that's going on in Broken Arrow, Father, I pray, Father, that unity would just flow in these meetings and they would be of one mind and that each decision, Father, your will would be done. We thank you, Lord, that this city of Broken Arrow acknowledges you at these meetings and they want a prayer and so we offer up a prayer of Thanksgiving for all that you're doing, but we look towards the present time and the future, that your hand would be upon our city for safety and prosperity in the name of your Son. Amen.
We were blessed with two pastors tonight, just...
Do we need a double prayer? It's gonna be a rough night. Somehow we got... Sorry, Kurt. That's alright. We had several takers on a double prayer.
Let's pray together. God, we come together tonight, first just giving you thanks, saying thank you for the privilege of living in this free land where citizens get to participate in their governance in the future that they make. We give you thanks for the privilege of living in this city of Broken Arrow, for the bounty that you have bestowed upon us, for the wonderful people who inhabit this place, and we thank you, Lord, especially this night, for the leaders that have come before us, they give of their time and their talents to serve the interests of the people in this city that all might enjoy a prosperous and free life. So we pray for your wisdom for them, Lord, that the decisions made would be decisions that would give opportunities for all people regardless of where they come from, regardless of their economic zip code, regardless of what they've done. We just pray that this would be that kind of a city that embraces your love and models your love and let that be evident in the decisions made tonight, in the course set and the challenges overcome. So be with us all, help us all to do our part to make this a city that you are proud of, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here. Please stand and join Councilman Parks in the pledge.
Salute pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. I have two items that I want to have to remove, item J and item K have a conflict. Any other items to be removed?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item J and K.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Turn me over to the vice mayor.
Alright, items, consideration of item, sorry, item six, consideration by has removed from consent agenda, items J and K, are there any motions in that regard?
Make a motion to approve items J and K.
Second.
Motion second being made, is there any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Item seven is Public Hill's hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Presentation by Development Service Director Michael Skates and Emergency Management Director Jamie Ott on Safe Room Rebate Program. Michael, Jamie?
Yes, Mayor and Council, Michael Skates, Development Services Director. I'm excited to talk to you a little bit about our Safe Room Rebate Program. Earlier this year, representatives of the Oklahoma Emergency Management presented the Safe Room Rebate Program presentation at the local Oklahoma Conference. Following that conference, I was contacted by representative of the city of Tulsa and we established a phone conference with representatives of the emergency management organization. Prior to that, prior to that conference, I contacted Jamie Ott, our emergency management director, and asked him a little bit about the program and he had a lot of great things to say about the program, had experienced working with OEM on this program in the past, and so he sat in on the conference, on the phone conference with me. From that phone conference, you know, I felt like, and I think Jamie did too, that we felt that this was a great opportunity to present to our citizens to have a Safe Room Rebate Program in light of the storm seasons that we encounter. Through several meetings with city manager and other staff, we put together the program and Jamie sent off to OEM the notice of intent. He established about 100 homes, we were expecting 100 property owners to be, to shoot for for the first year, and he sent that off to OEM. OEM accepted that and we set out a course to establish a couple of public meetings. Jamie had attended a meeting with Creek County and found out that the dates that we needed to set were a little bit sooner than what we anticipated, and so we went ahead and established the two public meetings that are required for October 4th and October 9th, and so just around the corner, this Thursday and next Tuesday. Through that, the folks that come, Krista Flash helped us to get out notices to the public, Sign Shop has helped us prepare a sign for the Central on Main, and the application that you see up on the screen is the voluntary participation notice that applicants will sign when they come to the meeting. We'll have several computers available, the stormwater manager will be at the meeting and will help us identify the applicant's property and look to see if they are in a floodplain. They cannot participate in the program if they're in a floodplain. I don't anticipate that we'll have many properties that are in a floodplain since we regulate our floodplain and don't require, don't allow construction in a floodplain. And so from that meeting, the applicants can fill out the form at the two public meetings and turn those back into us, or they may take the application with them and need to return them by November 16th. Upon receipt of all the applications on November 16th, we'll review those and then we'll package those up and send those off to OEM, who then will review those and send those off to FEMA for review and final approval. That could take up to three months for that to occur. Once we hear back from FEMA on those applicants that were approved and selected, we will notify them and set up another meeting in which we'll provide them a packet and go through some of the same information that they'll see at the two public meetings on a presentation from OEM staff, but also information, you know, exactly what has to take place, you know, who they can purchase the safe room from, and it has to be FEMA certified and inspected, and all of that information has to be turned in prior to approval, at which time we would review it, send it off to OEM and FEMA, and once it's all approved, then they would be, receive a rebate up to 75%, not to exceed $2,000 of the cost of that safe room. Some of the information that the safe room has to be within 100 feet of the home, it can be inside the home, but it has to be within 100 feet of the home, safe room installed on the property, cited on the application, adhered to the guidelines, that's a big one, just gotta follow the guidelines, own the property, cited, and be the primary residence on that property, install the safe room after attending the mandatory meetings that I've talked about, installation by a certified contractor, safe room to meet current FEMA and ICC guidelines, attain a city safe room permit, have contractor certify installation and inspections, receive certificate of occupancy for the installed safe room, provide all proof of payment, so applicants need to keep their receipts, complete a W-9, and two pictures, one of the installed safe room and one of the full front of the house, and all of that information will be discussed at the two public meetings as well as the follow-up meeting. So I'm excited about this, when it came forward, I felt like it was an opportunity to get this out to the public and see what we can do to help those that are interested in safe rooms and provide that protection that we look for during the tornado season. I can answer any questions if you have any, or Jamie's here that can answer any questions.
You kind of answered one of mine, but just, just to put it out there, because I had some, I had posted about this and everybody thought it was such a great program and someone said, "Oh, I just installed a storm shelter," so they do have to attend the meeting before, it's not like retroactive, they just installed one this week.
It's not retroactive, no. If they've already installed the safe room, then they can't participate in this program.
Okay, and then my second question is if they don't, they have to go to the, one of the two meetings?
Yes.
To qualify, okay.
Yes.
And so there's 100, we've submitted for 100?
We sent in a notice of intent anticipating 100 properties. We may have less than that this first time, we may have more than that, if we have more than that, then I believe that we can revise our notice of intent if money is still available from OEM.
So if they go to the October 4th, do they, can they submit their application immediately after that? And I just, I'm trying to-
Yes.
-rationalize how if you happen to go to the second meeting?
The, you know, I don't know the number of citizens that will come to the first meeting or the second meeting, but we're not gonna turn anybody away, we'll take all of the applications, folks can turn those applications in at each of the public meetings, or they may, they may want to take the application with them and then they can turn it back into us before November 16th. That's the deadline, because we have a deadline of November 22nd that we have to send all of the applications back to OEM.
I think the only other thing for me is if people are putting them in their garage floor-
Yes.
-they need to be cautioned if their slabs post tension-
True.
-to be sure and not cut those cables, because-
That's a good point.
So you might, might make that a point to bring up.
That's a good point, and I will do that.
Okay. And, go ahead.
I would just ask the question, I think historically, haven't we, I know we don't allow the homes in a floodplain, but sometimes the backyards in some of the subdivisions are in a floodplain, would those people still qualify if they did have a backyard in a floodplain, the home was out and they put the storm shelter, or the shelter outside that floodplain?
Yeah, I don't know that they'll qualify for that-
Okay.
...since floodplain is on their property.
Because we do have some homes that the floodplain is on their property.
We do have some homes that do have floodplain that touch the property, but it's not in the home itself.
Can we check, Michael?
We can check on that.
And you may have said this, I'm sorry if I didn't catch it, but is this going to be something we can do on an annual basis? Is that the thought process?
We're hoping that we can, you know, it's all dependent upon the availability of money through FEMA to OEM.
Always has money.
But that's my hope, is that we can do this on an annual basis.
I think the program will take office, if you can do it every year, it's gonna get more and more people to be involved in it, and it's a great program, great way to get people safe in the community, so it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, you and Jamie both.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, item eight, Assistant City Manager of Operations, no one signed up. Item nine, General Council Business, consideration discussion, possible approval of projects to include it in the sale of the general obligation bonds, series 218B and series 218C and 218D. Kenny Schwab.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. Kenny Schwab, Assistant City Manager of Operations. I have the honor to present the list of our next bond sale to you, and just as the mayor read, this is three different series, 2018B, 2018C, 2018D. On 2018B, this is your last sale of your 2014 general obligation bonds, it's in the amount of $10.86 million. Now I'll just highlight a few of the main projects. In the transportation portion, which is $6.3 million, there's Albany, which is 61st Street, 9th to 23rd, right there in front of the high school, and then there's Olive, which is from Albany 61st to Kenosha 71st, kind of in the northwest part of the city, and I said that's $6.3 million. In the public safety, it totals just over $2 million and it includes mobile data, communication tower, command vehicle, and then the second phase to the public safety complex. Quality of life is $1.9 million and it includes our Chisholm Trail South or Events Park, a community trail network, and then three neighborhood parks, one is brand new, which is on 37th Street Park, and then the two that are existing, which is gonna have some playground improvements, are Highland Park and Vander park. And then the last part of that first series at 2018B is a stormwater portion at $630,000, and it's various improvements throughout the city, largely at your roadway bridges, I think there's one at Tucson and New Orleans and throughout the community. Moving to the 2018, which just passed this past year, in August, we have two sales. Sale one, series one, is the 2018C, and it includes quite a bit of projects here. Proposition one, transportation, I'm just gonna highlight a handful here, will include Houston Street from Lynn Lane to Highway 51, design, it'll include the intersection of 9th Street, Lynn Lane and Kenosha, as well as 9th Street and Hillside, this is design money, and it'll also include 23rd-
Can you stop right there and tell them about your conversations with ODOT about a possible larger project?
Absolutely. We've had a preliminary conversation with ODOT, and we're gonna follow it up here this month, about taking the monies for those two projects. So again, we're talking about Lynn Lane and Kenosha, Lynn Lane and Hillside Drive, where collectively we have about $4.1 million for the design, any right-of-way, and utility and the construction. We would like to potentially use that as our match for a surface-to-transportation program, STP, and that would be 20 to 25% our match, and then the federal money would be 75%. So if we put in four, maybe we get up to 20 million and actually go from intersection to intersection, address the bridge, address the access ramps. ODOT, in our preliminary conversation before the bond passed, was very interested in that, so we're gonna follow up with them and hopefully we can leverage our money, maybe even a little more, and maybe get from 20 to 25 million and really improve that corridor. But the monies that we're selling right now to do that STP, you need to have your design done, so we're selling our design money, at least at this phase.
So does the STP come through the state or through INCOG?
The STP, it will come through the INCOG portion, but it'll go to the state, but there's a chance that the state could put this in as their own project, and then it'd just be the state, and INCOG would be out of that, so that's a good question. Like I said, it's just preliminary conversations and we'll follow up this month on that. One of the other projects is County Line or 23rd from Omaha to Albany, 51st to 61st, we get a lot of calls on this. This is also the one that has the bridge over Adams Creek, so we have the design money for the road and the bridge in here. We also have our rehabilitate our subdivision streets, we have not identified all the streets, it'll come from our pavement condition index report, but we have a little bit over $1 million to go ahead and start some of those improvements into those neighborhoods.
Just one point, that's in addition to the about $2.5 million that we'll have from street sales tax for this year, so altogether, we'll be looking at doing probably over $3.5 million worth of neighborhood improvements.
Which would be reconstruct all the way to preventive maintenance, so that's a whole program. For the proposition one, the transportation, it's $5.3 million. Proposition three, we're selling about one point, recommending $1.5 million for quality of life projects, includes a skate park in Neen House, includes some improvements to Indian Springs Sports Complex, also includes the equipment and furnishing for a park in the southwest quadrant portion of the city, and it also includes some money for community trails, which we've already got going and will continue that. Then lastly, includes some money for the synthetic turf for the Events Park softball field that's going in, something separate.
Kenny, let's stop and step back here, I want to let Council know, last year we were approved by INCOG for a grant to do Washington from Garnett to Olive, however, approval of that grant's gonna, would cause us to have to push back the start of construction of that road, and we didn't want to do that because that's such an important road, and so I asked Mr. Schwab to go talk to INCOG about the possibility of switching projects that would qualify, and he had a meeting last week where they, preliminarily, they said that would be very favorable, so we're still on track to award that project early next year, but I wanted Kenny to tell the Council about that, about that project, so we're talking about $3 million, we should be able to apply to another project.
Yes, as Mr. Burton said, we applied for the local STP, which goes through INCOG, just as the mayor said, and we were selected and awarded 3 point, well, $3 million for Washington from Garnett to Olive. That's too high a priority, there's a long drawn-out process, there's a little bit of confusion on our part working with INCOG, you have to go through an environmental process, you have to wait to get right-of-way, so there was a lot of concerns, but we met with them last Wednesday, talked about other options. Can we substitute another project that's high priority or high scoring, and can we substitute something similar? They were very favorable to that, they just asked if we could get a project or two turned into them in the next month, and they would consider that and look at it. Sounded, like I said, very favorable that we could end up doing that. So moving along with the 2018C series, proposition four is public facilities, we're recommending the Armed Forces Meeting Hall, we're recommending the senior center activity, as well as the property for that, so that would be the design of the building and the property, and we're also recommending the software upgrade for the city facilities.
Let me comment right off, thank you. My recommendation to the Council, because of the importance of the senior annex and the veterans facility, is we've included money, as Kenny said, for potential land purchase and the design, and we're also gonna be asking the Council to enter to a short-term note to be able to fund the actual construction of the projects, and then when we have the large issuance, I believe it's in 2021 or 2022, of like $32 million, then we could actually pay off that note, so we could actually, if Council agrees, go through the building committees, get the design and so forth, acquire the land, then we could actually get those projects, the construction started sometime in 2019 for both of those projects, acquire the land for the parking lot as well, for the softball complex, Arrowhead, and the senior annex. So those are two projects that Council said were a priority in addition to the roads, and so our recommendation is to forward fund those by way of a short-term note. We have to acquire the land in order to be able to borrow the funds temporarily, and we've got funds in there to acquire, to acquire both pieces of property.
So the last list of projects in the 2018C series is a stormwater, that's proposition five, and it includes Stone Ridge Town Center, that's up by the hospital, some final design money to move forward with the next phase of that one. Probably one of the biggest ones that we received comments about through our public meetings was Indian Springs down there, just south of Jasper, going through the golf course, we're recommending money to go ahead and do the design and construction of that in this series. Then the last two under stormwater would be the Tiger Creek Nature Park and the shop to Adams Creek. These two projects are kind of a continuation of our partnership with the school, we got a lot of interest from not just the students, not just the teachers, but there was a lot of homeowner associations that put in input through this process, and we've got a lot of positive feedback, so this would be a continuation, quite possibly linking the trail in, as we had discussed. So the total for the 2018 Series C is $11.5 million. Now the last series would be the Series 2018D, and this is still the 2018 general obligation bond, this is proposition six, it has to be sold separately, it required a different percentage of the vote of the public, this is just drainage. We actually are selling about, or recommending a quarter of a million dollars in each one of our basins, so that's Adams Creek, Broken Arrow Creek, Hakey Creek, and then the combined basin that we had, Elm or Aspen, for a total of $1 million. So just summing it all up, Series 2018B was $10.86 million, Series 2018C is $11.5 million, and then the last one, 2018D, is $1 million. Be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
On 2018B-
Yes, sir.
-the Olive-
Yes, sir.
-Street, that, we're also expecting some federal funding-
You are correct, yes.
-as well, so just because we're selling it doesn't mean we're going to be able to start that in the near term, is that correct? I've had calls on this one and questions, I want to make-
Yes, this is another, this one we were awarded prior to the Washington one on STP. The sooner you get into the hopper, the sooner you can get into construction. Our design is nearing completion, this is some of our, our match, our local match for construction, we're wanting to go ahead and start processing the right-of-way and get utilities moved just as soon as we can, gotta get your environmental clearance, we believe that we can do that next year plus, and then we could go to construction pretty soon. I know Alex has the schedule on it, I don't necessarily have it, but I do believe that we can kinda expedite the construction of this, because we were further along than most of the other communities.
Would you relate to INCOG? I've only been waiting 11 years for the Washington Street project. Anything they can do to help expedite that, I would certainly appreciate.
When I got off the elevator, they had a picture of you right there, so I think they know.
It's gonna coincide with the 100th version Garnett intersection for me.
I hope not, but yes.
So this was, as I'm reading here, this is all of the 14 bond issues then?
That is correct, sir.
This completes it, okay.
You know, I sent a Council, an email to Council recently advising that, about Omaha is an important project to the Council, it's a county project, and we're talking about, if you think about the work that's gonna be done up there, what we tried to focus on in this bond, and Kenny made this recommendation, so I have to give him credit, is trying to make sure that he and Alex have all the design and some right-of-way out of the way, so as the funds become available to do the construction, we will literally have plans sitting on the shelf, ready to be funded, so we can actually go forth. Then we have to work them into the schedule, because we have so many roads that we're potentially gonna be able to do, we're getting ready to break out with a lot of roads in the north, south, and so forth, and so in addition to our projects, we've also got county projects that we've got to factor in, like Omaha, which is from Elm Place to County Line Road, also the county's talking about doing Garnett from 91st to 101st, and then there's discussions and plans being prepared to do 101st from Garnett to Memorial. So there's a lot of constructions going on, and we spent, we burnt a lot of brain cells last Thursday trying to make sure that when we plan out the work, that we're not really tying up the traffic any more than we need to.
Right. Alright, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve projects to be included in the general obligation bond series 2018B, 2018C, and 2018D sale.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9D, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute use agreement between Patio Condominium Homeowners Association for the 9th Street improvements. Alex.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Alex Mills, Director of Engineering and Construction, here tonight for approval, if you would grant it, of a use agreement for parking lots for the Patio Condo Association. A little bit of history, that their existing parking, if you can call it that, is more or less an extension of the 9th Street pavement, there's no real delineation between the road and their, and their condos, and they have been parking on their property and city property since before that area was even in the city. And when it was brought into the city, the administration and Council at the time did not take action, they probably should have, and so we've had a situation brewing there for a number of years. During the design of 9th Street, my staff and I have worked ex- During the design of Ninth Street, my staff and I have worked extensively with the homeowners in the patio condos to come up with some sort of solution that allows them to have some parking while allowing us to expand our roadway. As you know, we're going from two to five lanes, and it's going to be very tight there. Can we pull up the existing drawing? This is what it looks like today, well, actually, it looks a little messy in there because we've started a little bit of construction through there, but you can see the parking lot, I don't have a pointer, but yeah, there, there's the parking lot there. So the right of way line is basically that fence line right there, and it, and it extends down through there, so a portion of the parking of the paving area is on our right of way, and a portion is on their property. And so what you have before you is an agreement, and if you approve the agreement, the next item will be an acceptance of a donation of land. They're going to donate their land for us to be able to build our, our parking lot. Can we show the, the full parking? This is what it's going to look like, the, this property over here is the former Cook property, and we're, as you can tell, we're going to build a semi rectangular parking lot there with 32 spaces in it. And then this portion right here, this diagonal parking, sits on our right of way and on some of their property today. So what we would do is, they would donate us the property that we need to build this parking lot, and we would build both parking lots as part of the Ninth Street project. Both parking lots were bid as part of that project, and we're prepared to move forward on that construction. This agreement would be a 99-year lease for a dollar a year, they would be responsible for the day-to-day maintenance, cleanup, landscaping, irrigation, snow removal, any of that sort of thing. It would be our parking lot, the city's parking lot, we would be responsible for the long-term maintenance of that parking lot, so, you know, repaving at some point, et cetera. And then there is a cancellation clause in the contract that if, for some reason, we wanted, either party wants to terminate this agreement, we certainly could. But this will provide 57 parking spots. It, it is debatable as to whether that actually covers the amount out there, because they're not delineated, delineated in any fashion. We think you can park approximately 60 cars out there now, so this is, this is a way of, as close as we can come, of replicating the parking they have now, while allowing us to expand the roadway.
So can we have in the agreement that there can be no disabled cars on, in the, either the frontage parking or in the parking lot?
Yeah, the, the agreement itself discusses the maintenance. We, we own the parking lot, so if we see disabled cars, if we see items, we're certainly authorized to go in there and remove that.
I just want them to be aware of it.
Yes, sir, I understand. In, in addition to providing the parking, as you know, that area right now just looks horrible. This is going to be a boon for the area, it's going to make that whole area look much classier and dressier, it's going to be actual parking spots, it'll be safer. We think it's just a win-win, and it's been, it's been quite a journey to get here. There are 32 condos in there, some, a few are owned by a couple of investors, but it, it's been a lot, a lot of herding cats to get to this point, quite frankly.
We're improving the lighting up and down Ninth Street as well?
Yes, and, and the, the parking lot itself has lighting. The, the diagonal parking does not, it's going to get the, the street park lighting, but the actual parking lot, particular parking, has its own lighting as well.
I noted it was a, an exclusive agreement.
It is.
And are we obligated to monitor that exclusivity, or is that up to them to determine?
That is up to them. The signage they put, and I presume they will put up signage saying Patio Condo Parking Only, it's their responsibility to put that signage up, and their responsibility to maintain it. They would have to meet our, our regulations regarding the look of that signage, but yes, they would be responsible, if someone parks in there illegally, of, of having them towed, that would not be our responsibility.
I could see people from the soccer fields parking there.
Yeah, that was my concern, and I know there was original discussion that it would not be exclusive, and I think it makes more sense for it to be, but I don't want the city to have an obligation to.
We should have no policing of that at all, that should be totally up to them. And quite frankly, I was, I was concerned about, there's some apartments or condos right here, well, I guess that's a point you can see.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, it's more fun back there. There's some, there's some apartments or condos there, and they might be tempted to park there as well, but there is a full fence around this, so it blocks that area off from the existing residential.
So we, we had the right of way we needed, we're not getting any extra right of way except for where we're building them a parking area, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So they've been parking on our right of way all these years?
Correct.
Correct. So then we bought this land back to the south, that big lot, the city has bought that.
The Cook property, it's the owner of the property, yes, sir.
And so we bought that, and they're going to provide a lot for them, parking lot for them there, to try to get along with everybody, is that correct?
Correct.
We don't need any right of way, we're just trying to get along.
Have any more questions?
This has always been a difficult one, as you mentioned.
This is, this is as messy as I've run across, and, and really, you know, what I'm bringing to you today is not a solution that I am going to hang my hat on at any point, I think it is the best accommodation of what is an unfortunate situation, I think it's in the best interest of those residents of Broken Arrow and the city, because quite frankly, if we didn't provide them parking, there would be unactionable cause against the city as well.
We're in a no-win situation, if we don't, we've allowed them to park there for 40, 50 years.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to be the bad guy.
Yes, sir.
I, yeah, I, I agree.
I make a motion to approve the use agreement with Patio Condominium Homeowners Association Inc. and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Reluctantly, yes.
Lester.
Reluctantly, yes, as well.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Okay, item 9C, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1135. This is about the general warranty deed, all, Alex?
Yeah, this is the follow-up, permanent right of way and temporary construction easements we need to make the agreement you just approved possible.
Make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1135 and authorize its execution.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9D, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution 1137, Resolution authorizing city attorney to agree to judgment in the case of city Broken Arrow versus B7 Properties. Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On February 6, 2018, council approved the filing of a petition for condemnation to acquire a right of way as part of the 23rd Street Improvements. This was located between Houston and Kenosha Streets. Through the process of this condemnation hearing, the commissioners valued the property at $74,500. We subsequently obtained appraisal of $95,000 from independent appraiser John Story. In addition, it's notable that BZ Properties, who owned the lot that we're condemning, filed an inverse condemnation action alleging that property rent had not been properly paid as part of the relocation of the tenant in this, and we determined that that was accurate through settlement discuss, discussions with council for BZ Properties, Bruce Sewell, they'd agreed to settle this matter for $135,633.40, inclusive of fees and costs. Settlement in this amount would be less than proceeding with condemnation action, including anticipated attorney's fees. As such, staff recommends you approve Resolution Number 1137 and authorize its execution.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1137 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9E, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1138, Resolution authorizing legal department to file answer agreeing to vacate part of amended plat of Lynn Lane Industrial Park. Trevor.
I thank you, Mayor and Council. Alpha Laval owns some property located east of Lynn Lane, south of Houston Street, they're seeking to vacate a part of that amended plat in the Lynn Lane Industrial Park area. Alpha Laval has followed the requirements of 11 OS Section 42-102, and has requested that lots one and lots two of block one in Reserve Area A of the amended plat be vacated. My understanding is that they're going to be a replating of this area to better suit their purposes, because Alpha Laval has met their statutory duties under Section 42-102, staff recommends that you approve Resolution Number 1138 and authorize its execution.
Any questions, Trevor?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1138 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9F is, is Resolution 1139, we have this on Bama, so we need a motion to table this and come back and discuss this after we.
So moved.
Discuss.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9G, consideration discussion, possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 1141, Resolution of the Broken Arrow City Council declaring emergency as a result of a bridge failure resulting in undermining of roadway on South Poplar between Oak Ridge and West Pittsburgh Court. Rocky Hinkle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Rocky Hinkle, Director of Streets and Stormwater. Before you tonight is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 1141, which is the declaration to declare an emergency as a result of a bridge failure resulting from undermining of the roadway on South Poplar Avenue between West Oak Ridge Street and West Pittsburgh Court. This is due to a significant rain event in the afternoon hours of September 21, 2018. Initial calls came in that the road had undermined, we immediately shut the road down in the interest of public safety, and upon further inspection, we noticed that one of the three 84-inch corrugated steel Stormwater pipes had deflected about a foot, deeming the bridge to be structurally deficient. So this was the need to declare an emergency to bypass the, the bid process and expedite repairs for this bridge structure.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1141 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9H, consideration discussion, possible approval of, approval to reject all bids for construction of Neen House Park Sand Volleyball Courts, and find the best interest of the city of Broken Arrow be served by the rejection. Alex Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. It is basically, just as you read, we went out to bid for this project, we advertised on August 28 and September 4. We received six bids on September 18, four of them were non-responsive due to, I would say, technicality we had in the bidding process. We lost our, our low bidder in that process due to something I think was more or less an oversight on my staff and myself, so we think it's in the best interest to reject these bids, go out, clean up the bid documents a little bit, and rebid the project, and hopefully we'll, we'll receive the lower bids I think we deserve on this project.
Any questions of Alex?
Not of Alex, but legally, we don't have any problems with rejecting this, this way?
No, sir. No problems.
I make a motion then we reject all bids for construction of Neen House Park Sand Volleyball Courts, and subtraction is in the best interest of the city of Broken Arrow.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9I, consideration and discussion, possible approval to withdraw the purchase of one three-quarter ton crew cab truck from Bill Knight Ford due to pricing and option changes in the statewide vehicle contract. Leezirk.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Leezirk, General Services Director. On August 21, 2018, council meeting, the council had approved the purchase of a pickup truck for the Information Technologies Department on their statewide contract. When the purchasing manager placed the order for that truck, Bill Knight Ford had informed us that one of the options that was selected required the appearance package to be ordered with the truck, which included chrome wheels, appearance packages, chrome bumper, and things like that. The IT department felt that having this appearance package on a work truck can send a strong message to the public about how we spend our funds. So I, your, IT director had asked the purchasing manager to retabulate the bids from all the dealers that had that type of truck without options that included those appearance type packages. During that inquiry and getting the pricing, Ford also informed us under state contract they had some pricing increases on some of their options. So the bid tab was retabulated with options that didn't include the need to have an appearance package, and Bill Knight Ford is no longer the low bidder for the type of, that type of truck. Bob Howard Dodge is now the, the low bidder for that type of truck. So we are asking that the council withdraw the approval and authorization, authorization to purchase truck from Bill Knight Ford and re-award the bid to Bob Howard Dodge under the statewide contract.
So it wasn't rebid, we just extracted the appearance package out of all the bids received?
Right, the, under the state contract, all the vendors have bids, we, we extract pricing from everybody that offers that truck, and for clarity reasons, we show everybody's pricing, and we try to purchase the truck that is at, offered at the lowest price. So we did, there was no official bidding on our part, it was done under the state contract.
Oh, okay.
So you're just purchasing a different truck?
Yes, yes, one that does not have the need to have a chrome appearance package on it.
Make a motion to approve the withdrawal of the purchase of one three-quarter ton crew cab truck from Bill Knight Ford and approve and authorize the purchase of one three-quarter ton crew cab truck from Bob Howard Dodge presented to the Oklahoma statewide vehicle contract.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. We have no preview ordinances and no ordinances, remarks, inquiries with governor body members. I'd like to say this month is Pinktober, hence the pink shirt. I think it's important that everyone, all females go out and have their mammograms get checked for cancer, and as I learned from my late wife, just because their mammogram comes out clean doesn't mean that you don't have it. If you don't feel well, you've got to press that, but I'd like to urge all of our citizens to make sure that they're screened, or this is a good time to think about that screening if you're, if it's later in the year, so I, I just wanted to bring it out to light that something's very important, and people can save their lives by having advanced screening. Are there any other remarks or inquiries? Okay, we'll go to item 13, remarks and updates by city manager, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. In order to keep the meeting moving forward, because we do have a presentation in, in Bama, just wanted to mention that we should be receiving the transitional review report sometime in the next few days, and we're going to get that out to council, and there'll probably be a need based on schedules to have a special meeting to review, to review that. So Russell Gale, Assistant City Manager over Administration, is going to make sure that he contacts the council and find out about the availability, so I want to make sure that you work with him to find a date that works for the auditor as well as, as, as all of you. That's all, that's all, sir.
Okay, thank you. We do have executive session, so I'd entertain a, a motion for a brief, brief recess to go into Bama and Beta.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Limpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here. Item three, consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item five, public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognition, and awards. Five A, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the two thousand and nineteen recycling pilot program. Lee Zirk.
Chairman, Authority members, Lee Zirk, General Services Director. On December seventeen, the Authority authorized city staff to conduct two recycling pilot projects as recommended from the Citizens Recycling Committee. So it's my pleasure tonight to give you an update on where we're at in that process. After approval to move forward from February until now, you can see that some of the items that we have got completed thus far. We've been working with our refuse and recycling consultant, GBB, and through them, we have selected a firm to do the public relations, which is going to include printed materials, education, and things to help educate the pilot residents. Want to make a note that that PR firm is also subcontractor of our consultant, GBB. Additionally, the cart specifications for both the trash and the recycling carts have been written. The bids have been let, and just a little while ago, on the consent agenda, you approved the actual purchase of those carts. Also, the tippers, the mechanism that goes on the back of the truck that actually tip the carts have been acquired. We're working through the Fleet Management Division, and those have been installed on one truck, and we're working on getting them installed on another, another, two other trucks. Also, we have established the pilot project areas, and we'll discuss that a little bit later on in the future slide. We also held a kickoff meeting in September. That'll be the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what happened there. And the last bit on recycling is voluntary. I want to reiterate the fact that while we are working through this process, we're keeping focused that we want to make sure that the pilot residents understand that recycling is not mandatory, it's their choice whether or not they want to recycle and put that cart out. So we will be keeping that in mind as we move through this process. So during the kickoff meeting, the first day, which was September fifth, staff, GBB, our consultant, and American Waste sat down together to talk about the type of materials that are likely going to be recycled under this pilot project, and that will be on a future slide, we'll discuss that a little bit. Also, we spent quite a bit of time on messaging, how he does his messaging, and also what our contract might look like. The next day, staff met with GBB, our consultant, Propeller Communications, which is the PR firm, and also Shepherd Research, which is going to do a lot of the polling and finding out, getting the pulse of our citizens about what's happening during that pilot project. So during that meeting, Propeller Communications talked to us about their ideas, we talked to them about our ideas, and they're going to be working to develop a recycling and media campaign going forward. Also, we have looked at the January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth as a start date for this project, which means the week of October fifteenth, we would like to get the initial written communication out to the residents within that pilot project area, which include information about details and what the program is going to be about. Following that, in November, each of the pilot areas, we will hold an open house to discuss the goals and expectations and provide any additional information homeowners may need during that open house meeting. And of course, during the pilot project, while it's going on, Shepherd Research will be reaching out to the residents to survey them, ask questions, get information, which we can later on use on a frequent basis that we can use during the pilot project to help us make some critical adjustments if need be. So even though we got quite a few things, the next three months, we still have quite a bit left to accomplish. In our operations and call center, we need to make sure that that staff is educated and has the material so that when they get calls from the residents, that we'll be able to answer their questions, answer them the same, and answer them correctly. Also, website planning, we've got to get a website together, working with the PR company in Crystal will be putting some website information so that they can digitally get the information that they want and need. In November, GBB will be providing us a collection expert, which is going to work with our refuse queues to get them familiar with carts and how that system works, because we've never worked with it. Not that they can't, but it's very helpful that we can become very familiar with it, so when we get there, we're hitting the ground running. Also, we hope to have a contract with American Waste for the recyclable processing on our about December first for your consideration and approval. Route planning is something that I want to touch on. We do have to plan routes, but I did want to make sure that you all understood that we are going to be using the same crew for the pilot project. So what this means is a crew and driver that picks up the recycling in Pilot Project Area One is going to be the same crew that picks up the pilot project in Area Two. That way, each area is going to experience the same level of service and people on their recyclables, and likewise for trash as well. Also, we have to work, and we'll be working with our consultant on developing some collection policies that need to be established so that we know how to deal with different things that occur with the carts, things that are set out the cart, all those different areas, as well as managing our customers, because they're going to have problems and questions, and we need to make sure we know we're going to how to address them ahead of time. Also, of course, cart procurement, we took the first step today to actually get them ordered. We still have to talk about the in-mold label that's going to have the pictorial instructions on the top, we'll talk about that in another slide, and of course, the city logo on the sides, once we get that done and we get the carts ordered, and then lastly, to actually get them delivered in time, about a week before the start of the pilot project. So this slide here, a couple of things, let me draw your attention to the bottom there, the recycle items. This was the result of the meeting that we had with American Waste. What we're looking at and what they're focusing on right now is glass bottles and jars, aluminum and steel cans, paper, cardboard, plastic bottles, jars, and tubs. But I do want to make a note that although this list is pretty firm right now, it might be adjusted slightly depending on the ending contract that we have with American Waste. Also, right above that, you'll see a sample of an IMLA in-mold label, and that's a label that's going to go on the top of the lid of the recycling cart. It can't be removed, it's part of the lid. And this is actually comes from American Waste, they've been very successful with it. We thought it was a good idea. So right now, our PR firm has that design, and they're working to give it a Broken Arrow twist and make that also as part of our trash cart when we place the order for the recycle cart, rather. All right, next, I want to touch upon the pilot project areas. Here you see kind of a bird's eye view of the city of Broken Arrow. The areas in red are what you see as the two pilot projects. Notice we got one in the north and one in the south. Now, I want to point out that when we selected these areas, we had some very specific things in mind that we wanted to accomplish. One is, we wanted to have one in the north and one in the south. The other is, we wanted to have each pilot project area be a part of an already existing refuse route. Thirdly, we wanted to make sure that each area contained a good cross-section of Broken Arrow homes, whether entry-level, mid-level, and higher-level homes, so that each area was roughly equivalent to one another so that we could compare them. So let me move in first on the north route and get a closer view of what might be in there. So here you have the pilot project area for Thursday. Thursday would be that pickup day. Note that it's a two-cart system. They're going to get one refuse cart, they're going to get one recycling cart. This happens to be in Route Eight on the north end. It has five hundred and seventy-nine homes, and it happens to be in Ward Two. You can see some of the subdivisions it includes is Vandiver Trails, Bristol Ponds, and part of Stacy Lynn East. The south end, which will be collected on Friday, will be a one-cart system. Here, they will just get a recycling cart, and they'll put their trash out in a normal manner, and we'll collect it up in a normal manner. This happens to be on Route Five in the south, and it happens to be in Ward Three and consists of five hundred and fourteen homes. Some of the subdivisions in there include Wood Metal, South Town Estates, the Meadows and Indian Springs, and Suburban Estates. So with that being said, we have got a lot planned and going, we still have a lot to do, but I think we're making good progress, and we're going to keep plugging forward until we get it done. With that, I'd like to see if you have any questions, and I'll do my very best to try to answer them.
Any questions, Lee?
One question is comment that you included in that the recyclables, glass bottles and jars, and do they feel like that that will sustain, that glass bottles and jars?
At the present time, American Waste is accepting glass, and they are set up to recover that, and they have a market for it.
That's good.
Mm-hmm.
And then the second one, the southern one, so it's going to have the one cart, and they'll have the trash bags?
Right.
They provide their own trash bags, is that correct?
Yes, well, our trash bag distribution is going on right now, so they are already going to have the bags in their possession.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So with the, China's not taking mixed paper now, so that's causing the price of paper to go up as far as people are having to sell it. Do you think we're still going to be able to do mixed papers? American Waste is still going to take?
At the present time, we are. I know that as a recycler, contamination is the biggest part of the problem, and so part of our messaging and part of what we're going to learn as pilot project, one, we're going to find out what our contamination rate is, and we're going to also find out what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, and what possibly we could do to reduce our contamination going forward if we decide to go citywide.
In addition to American Waste, has there been consultation with the Met because the glass issue? I'm getting conflicting reports on that. As the city's trustee to the Met, there's been discussion about that topic. Has that, has there been consultations with the Met in that regard?
No, sir, they have not, but we can certainly reach out to the Met and find out what their take is on that. Yes, sir.
So you plan on having an organizational meeting with the areas that will be served by this, so citizens can come and ask questions or better?
Yes, it's primarily, yes, it's primarily going to be focused for the pilot residents. We will advertise to them.
Understand, that's what I mean.
Yes, yes. We'll have an open forum where they can come and talk to us, we'll answer questions, we'll have a sample cart and things like that for them to take a look at and feel, touch.
This is just a little thing, but on this sticker that goes on top?
Yes.
It seems like the area that said no, it said always remember at top?
Mm-hmm.
And I know there is a line through those items, but it's almost like it needs to say, do not place these items, or I don't know, something more than just?
Yeah, if I go back to that, we had some discussions because where it says always remember, we had actually changed that because the American Waste version just says no.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to be a little more positive in saying, remember, don't include these things. We didn't want to have the big negative.
Maybe you put an X instead of just a Y.
Well, okay.
I noticed too, it's a once-a-week pickup, whichever day, this particular ones are going to be on Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
And that emulates what came from the committee, was it go from two to one, once-a-week pickup?
Yes, sir.
I just want to mention to the council members is that I felt it was important that we have meetings with those in the area. Obviously, there have been, there's been a lot of interest in recycling over the last couple of years, and our focus is to talk to the residents that are part of the program. However, to make sure that there is any misunderstandings or to address any issues, misinformation that's out there, we will make the public aware about the programs and exactly what we're planning on doing. A lot of folks have called and want to know they want to be a part of the program, how can they be a part of the pilot program, and we want to make sure that they're aware of this. But the focus is to get the feedback from those that are participating, so we can bring a good recommendation with good data to the city council next spring. So we'll do a citywide deal, but we will also make sure we invite everyone that's in the pilot program. But I think the package of information that Russell and Lee and the team has put together is very informative, so if you have any comments about content, you're reading it one way, we may look at it another, let us know, because we want to make sure that what we put together, we put it together, if you see it differently, let us know, and we'll update it, and so we want everybody to hopefully attend the meeting and answer their questions and feel like they're part of this process, and hopefully those that don't want to participate convince them that to do, because we need their feedback. We need their involvement in this, so we can say that we had a strong response and participation in both of the pilots.
So you have a kickoff meeting, will you have a wrap-up meeting with them, or are you just going to ask them like at the kickoff meeting to be interactive with you with their thoughts and?
Well, we haven't discussed that to date. However, I do know that once a pilot project, during the actual pilot project, we're going to be measuring, weighing, counting, all sorts of things, but when the project, pilot project's over, we're still going to be carrying on. The residents will not know that we're not doing all the specific measurements that we have during the pilot project. So whether or not that will be necessary to have a wrap-up meeting, because they're not going to experience any change in service until we make a further decision.
And once those, the results of your, of the pilot programs will be presented back to the recycling committee?
Yes, and yourself as an authority, yes.
Well, I know how much time and effort you all have spent on this to make it happen, and I personally appreciate that, because I know, I know it's kind of having to, a new ball of wax, so well done in that regard. Well, I want to say I had a good conversation with Bill Cade yesterday, he's in the audience, and he says his guys are rocking, ready to rock and roll, and they're ready to move forward with this, they're excited about it, they're learning the route ware and realizing that is beneficial. So operationally, I think Lee's done an outstanding job, and Bill as well, I just want to thank both of them for getting us to this point, and looking forward to getting started.
And likewise, I do too, and I know quoting the city manager, he might have changed his mind by now, but one of his quotes was that the present system is not sustainable, and I think the committee that you're looking at, the recycling committee, knows that, so trying to come up with something that is sustainable, and so we're looking forward to. Do you need a motion from us, or are you just continuing on, or what's the pleasure?
Just a presentation, right?
Presentation. You don't need anything?
Unless you want to give us some further direction, other than that, we're going to keep plugging along with your original directive to begin two pilot projects.
This is really just let the council know, I think we're being consistent with what your direction was, and if there's not any questions, then we're going to go forward accordingly.
Good.
All right, thank you, we're excited to get this moving along. Thank you.
Okay, item six, general authority business, consideration discussion of possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution number eleven forty, a resolution authorizing a loan from OWRB. Cindy?
About a month ago, the Authority authorized the submission of a loan application to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for the amount not to exceed twenty-five million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. On September eighteenth, Alex and I went to OWRB, and our loan package was presented, and we were approved for the first loan, which is the FAP, we call our Financial Assistant Program, and that was for twenty-one million three hundred and five thousand dollars. Tonight, we're asking that the FAP loan that was approved on September eighteenth be approved by approving a resolution number ten forty by the Authority to go ahead and execute, to have the mayor execute the necessary documents.
Any questions of Cindy?
Make a motion to approve resolution number eleven forty and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
And the remaining four million will be going at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Mr. Council, could I ask Cindy to read what those projects, what that money's for, because I think it's important that?
I'm sorry.
That we read that in there, because we want to keep the community posted on what projects we're talking about. It's in the fact sheet, but I thought it'd be good if you just outlined those, Cindy.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. For the purpose of constructing a new pretreatment basement at the Vergis Water Treatment Plant, acquiring property for the installation of the booster pump station at the existing water connection to Tulsa, designing the restoration of a second-ground storage tank on Tiger Hill, constructing the replacement of existing Lynn Lane trunk sewer line, constructing the county line trunk sewer line, acquiring right-of-way easements for the rehabilitation of the Elm Creek trunk sewer line and other related construction.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Quite a good thing. Got to get a lot done.
Okay, item seven, executive session, we don't have one, another motion?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy.